Call to order, please stand for the citation of Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in its grasp.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, first on the agenda will be the roll call. Alderman Smith. Absent. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Schneider.
Present.
Alderman Saunders.
Present.
Alderman Simpson.
Present.
Alderman Osborne.
Present.
We have a form, so we shall proceed. Okay, first thing we have on the agenda now is to review and approve the minutes of the September 4th, 2025 Board Meeting down under tab four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 4th, 2025 meeting.
We have a motion on the floor to accept and approve the meeting minutes from the, excuse me, September 4th, 2025 Board Meeting, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a most, a second on the floor, is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold up your hand if you would please. All opposed say nay and hold up your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. For those in the audience who might ask question what that was all about, these meetings are being videotaped. We've had members of our community ask that we attempt to have members raise their hands when they vote aye or raise their hands when they vote nay or no, so that they can know who voted which way, but it's not always clear when you watch the video. So we will attempt to do that, I'm not going to make a promise we'll get it right every time. Moving right along. Next thing we have on the agenda will be the mayor's report, and I'll attempt to keep it very short. First and foremost, a chloramine notification is going out to citizens, and it will be posted on the webpage. That's something that is required by the state prior to going to chlorination, which is one of the upgrades we're currently in the process of doing out at their water treatment facility. That chlorination change will not occur prior to October 15th, so it will be after that point in time. It's going to be posted on our webpage, and also each individual subscriber will receive a notification in the mail. We met with cleaner and associates regarding the emerging contaminants project on the 12th of this month, sat down and reviewed what the goals and objectives were, and they have begun their work. For those of you who are not familiar with that is, DNR from time to time comes out with new requirements relative to safe drinking water. They've identified emerging contaminants, there's dozens of them, and so what this process is, we have hired an insurance firm to come in and perform a study and see if we have any emerging contaminants that are currently in or getting into our water supply, and if they are, then recommend ways to remediate that and resolve it. Hopefully, if they find something, we'll be able to apply for grants to help fund those upgrades if in fact they find anything. And my hope is they find nothing. So also, we met with the library board president on 17th to finalize a lease agreement which we signed, that the board had previously agreed to and authorized me to sign, I signed it this week. We also discussed the library fund balance transfer, which that will be discussed later on during our meeting. And we also requested them to move the adult education classes from the basement up into the library. So that took care of that with the library hopefully. Also, not important, but interesting, is we've been taking care of the maintenance of a property on Stoddard slash 36 for 20 years, mowing it, et cetera, et cetera. And because we were interested in trying to find the owners of all these properties that we're mowing for free each year and have their tax clean reflect that cost, which you're able to do that, we found out that, well, it's kind of a no man's land actually. The company that it belonged to was owned by two individuals who both passed on. There's some issues with the duty of trust not ever getting formally entered into the court records. Consequently, long story short, Mr. Steven Williams is taking over the maintenance of that property. He is working on taking ownership, he's been working with the county for quite some time, and he's going to be contacting our city attorney with some information relative to what we, the city, needs to do to help enable him to do that. Basically what it is, it's going to be a letter that says that we have no interest in the property and no one owes us anything, just please take it, so we don't have to mow it anymore. That's what it boils down to. There used to be a gas station there, you know, over 20 plus years ago.
There's still a way to trust.
Between verdicts and the detailing shop?
Say it again.
The one with the whole island.
Well, let me tell you what I found out, I contacted the clerk's office, union oil companies stopped paying taxes on it in 2000, and they sent notices out for two or three years in a row with no response. They decided not to put it on tax rolls because of other considerations of the property being unmarketable, I want to get into that tonight. Long story short, it has been on tax rolls for over 20 years, and they determined they couldn't sell it, there'd be no qualified buyers. So I'm wishing Mr. Williams the best of luck and hope he is able to obtain it, because our interest is in not having to maintain it, that's our interest. So that's that. And that's all for now. So moving right along, city clerk's report.
I really don't have anything, I have everything in my package. I provided you the check into half balances as of March 16th, 25th, as well as the most recent tax paper, and also an active status there as well.
Absolutely. I need to talk to the chairman of the board adjustments about our last meeting, so I'll know what to recommend.
Please.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did want to interrupt.
Is it okay if we go ahead and go to the attorney's report?
Yeah.
All right, all right, that concludes your report, thank you very much. City attorney's report?
I don't know, record everything that I've been working on for the address in other places.
Okay, okay. Mr. Williams will be contacting you.
Okay.
I suggest he get a few to find out what this document is, that the county says he has to have from us, and we'll try to cooperate with him in that matter. All right, let's go ahead and move forward, we'll authorize guest speakers, that's the next thing on agenda. First person is Tonya Pryor, would you please come up and address the board?
Good evening everyone, so I'm Martha Marcy Chamber, and we are having our fall festival October 4th at St. Jude's, and Catherine Street, Court Street, and Vine Street closed, that walk around it.
Court and Vine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Catherine.
Okay.
And then we'll need barricades and orange cones, and then access to our dumpsters.
All right. Mr. Osborne, have you seen any issues with this whatsoever?
No.
Captain, do you see any issues with this whatsoever?
I don't know.
All right, I need a motion from the board to allow closure of Court Vine and Catherine on October 4th, is that the right way to say it? That's the correct terminology? All right, I need a motion.
Yes, summon it.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the closure of Court Vine and Catherine Street as stated by Tonya Pryor on October 4th, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the closure of Court Vine and Catherine on October 4th, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. You'll take care of that Rodney?
Yeah.
All right, if you have any issues, any change, let Rodney know, he'll be the one handling this. All right, next on the agenda is Kim Spalding.
If she's pressed or not. Lily has been conversing with her.
Do you know what the substance is of the issue?
Yeah, so there's some empty area of the cemetery, that's like where her dad buried it, there's empty, empty area that hasn't been zoned or anything yet. She was like, you know, she could buy a plot over there before it begins being zoned and stuff, she could get next door down. The only thing, the next thing available was like Route 11 of that addition, so it's pretty far back from behind that. That was her, that was her question, she just wanted to see if that would be available for her purchase, or she didn't have to get or anything.
So how would you qualify that? It's an area that's currently empty.
Yeah.
It is on the plat as cemetery property.
I believe so, right?
However, it's unsectioned, has not been sectioned, correct?
No, I don't think it is.
Yeah.
The one that worked on now, we had four hands clear on that, we got it to Row 15. So it's not near full.
What would your recommendation be? Can you manage it?
Fill up what you got first, or get it, go hip stop around, you know, what you can, because it's all mapped out. And well, we go over here, 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 I don't know, anytime I've been around in the cemetery, they like to fill them up, but section.
Matt's not here.
She only wants one plot. I don't know for sure if she wants her aunt's case, or if it's her and Jeff's.
We should wait until she can come to us.
Yeah. I'm sorry, what was that question?
We should wait until she can come to us.
Her dad's in Row 2, I don't know exactly where she's at. Right across the road, Row 2, what you can.
So when you look at it, you see them all?
Yes. I understand what she's talking about, there's a row, her dad's here, she's wanting to buy over here, which, you know, it is mapped out that way, I don't have to keep it that way, which, that's no big deal. I mean, I could put them at her desk.
I know for sure her and Jeff, but I wasn't, she didn't, we didn't go full in the detail, she wasn't willing to buy anything with Jeff's.
I didn't know if you wanted to start selling over here before this one was formed or not.
Well, my initial reaction, and I can't speak for the board, but my initial reaction is, I could, I can very well understand why, you know, you would like to keep your family together.
Okay.
And keeping that in mind, I don't know that I would want to say no, but that's not my call. Do we need to wait until she can be here, Lori, is that what you're suggesting?
I think we need to. No, yeah, I would make this a suggestion.
All right.
Let her come in.
Okay, it's fine.
I mean, for him to say that you don't know, but, you know, I hate to make a decision on the right shit.
Okay, let's do that, let's table that. Next on the agenda is Bush Pennywell from the Shriners. Bush is not here, I believe that what he planned on doing was asking us to use the four-way stop, I don't know what the dates are.
Uh, the 4th.
The 4th?
Fall Festival.
Okay, so they want, they want, they want to do fundraising at what we will call the four-way stop on the 4th of?
October.
October.
So we call it like before Fall Festival.
Captain, see any problem with that?
No.
All right.
He had a meeting tonight, or else he would have been.
That's fine, so.
We will need to get insurance requirements from them as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm turning up a little more lunch and stuff like that, but we're on it.
All right, so can, can, have they turned it in?
Not yet.
Okay, so.
We do need insurance. At the four-way stop?
Yes.
Some do, some don't?
One entity was allowed to do it without it because of me. I got a, what I would call a very late request, and overstepped a little bit, but thankfully we got through it, nobody dying, so.
I'll share the blame on that.
Yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate that, you're one of the few that will jump on board there with me, but anyway, what we need to do, a motion contentious upon receiving the whole harmless?
Yes.
Okay. So in order to allow the Shriners to use the four-way stop on October, what'd you say it was?
4th.
Oh, October 4th again, we got a whole lot going on on October 4th, don't we? We need a motion to approve the Shriners utilizing the four-way stop on October 4th.
I'll make a motion to allow the Shriners to use the four-way stop October 4th, I'm sorry, contentious upon receiving appropriate.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Be there any discussion about the matter at hand? No, all in favor say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed say nay or no and raise your hand, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is Mr. Ed Bourne from the Knights of Columbus, hi.
Hello. I remember the last time, the shortest meeting in the county. I represent two councils, one from 28, who would like to have the use of the four-way stop on October the 10th, and my second party, or council, would like to use the same four-way stop on the 18th, for the collection of funds for the, gotta say this right, God's special people.
Oh, cool.
The handicapped areas.
Good. So would it be fair to say that we need to have a motion to approve the Knights of Columbus to utilize the four-way stop on October 10th, and then also the Knights of Columbus, even though it's maybe a different group, on the 18th, is that, is that fair?
That's correct.
All right.
Are you sure that was the right day?
Yes ma'am, that's what my council leaders told me.
What do you think? The 11th and the 18th?
10th, it should be on a Friday night.
Oh, there you go.
Friday and a Saturday.
A Friday and a Saturday.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine. All right, you need a motion to approve the October 10th, can you do them both at the same time?
Sure, and it would be contingent on insurance.
Again, on the whole harmless and insurance.
He's got it in his hand, doesn't he?
Yes.
Say that again?
He has it in his hand.
The insurance.
Cool, look at him, turn it in.
I already have it.
You've already got it, cool. Okay, so I need a motion to allow the Knights of Columbus to utilize the four-way stop on October 10th and October 18th.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for the matter at hand, be there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move forward, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries.
If it doesn't make any difference, the 10th, they were planning on being an evening activity, like, I think it's 5:30 to 8:00 or something like that, rather than the whole day, so.
I don't, I don't think we have any issues.
Depends on the weather, you never know.
We don't have any issues with it.
Okay.
None whatsoever, I'm aware of it.
I don't thank the mayor for helping me direct me to the right people and giving me that story to get clearing on, appreciate.
You're welcome, Ed. I'm sure, I'm sure there's many members of the community that appreciate what the Knights of Columbus do as well, and the same thing goes for the Shriners, if I didn't say that. So next we have on the agenda, some really.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, some really fun stuff, new business. Okay, under tab nine, you should have four separate ordinances. These are orders, right now they're bills, but four separate bills of, for the transfer of the, selling the properties to the four different individuals to, one that bids on the property, that, a sale property that we sold, one more second please. Okay, the first one is bill number seven, it's an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate to Randy Moore. Is that a sufficient reading?
Yeah, we can do that only.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve bill number seven, directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City to sell certain real estate property to Randy Moore.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second on the floor, to authorize bill number seven, or approve bill seven, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate to Randy Moore. All in favor say aye.
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 Jason.
All opposed say nay. Be there any further discussion? All right. We had to do a second reading on that one, oh boy. Second reading for bill number seven, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate to Randy Moore. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Be there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion carries. By voice, always on the second one, all right, do it.
Alderman Quinn, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, moving on, bill number eight, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate to Thomas G. Bach. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, sec, who's the second?
Adrian.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Me.
Oh, you, I'm sorry. Take a second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, be there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Second reading.
To approve bill number eight, ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate property to Thomas G. Bach.
I'll second it.
We have a most, second on the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alderman Saunders? Yes. Alderman Osborne?
Yes.
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 Next thing, we're going to be, bill number nine, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate to the Monroe City United Methodist Church, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a most, second on the floor, be there any discussion? All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries, second reading.
I'll make a motion for the second reading, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate to the Monroe City United Methodist Church.
We have a motion in the second, voice, vote?
We don't have a second.
I'm sorry, I thought we had a second.
Alderman Osborne?
Yes.
Alderman Snider?
Yes.
Alderman Quinn?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, moving right along, bill number 10, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate to Lisa Johnston.
I'll make a motion to approve bill number 10.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a most, second on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries, second reading, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Monroe City, Missouri to sell certain real estate to Lisa Johnston, do we have a motion? Do we have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Alderman Snider?
Yes.
Alderman Snider?
Yes.
Alderman Quinn?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries, bill approved, that takes care of the real estate portion. All right, next thing we have is the approval of the 2025 tax rates, as you were aware, we had a slight issue, but we had to come back and redo this because of the change that was received from the state auditor's office, it wasn't really their fault, but it was nobody's fault, just the way it worked out, we've got to get this done. We need to approve the 2025 tax rates as shown on the notice of tax levy hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed tax rate as shown on the notice of levy tax hearing.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second on the floor, to approve the tax levy as shown on the public notice, the proposed tax rates for 2025 will be .7218 for the general fund and .1932 for the library fund. We have a second?
No, next. Next.
You did.
Did I? I'll correct.
We have a motion, second on the floor, to approve the tax levy, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries, anything further required on that than that? All right. Okay, next thing we have on the agenda is the 2025, 2026 budget work session, the first of probably several.
Just.
So we need to set a date and a time for the first, for the first work session, am I correct? Okay, so does someone want to propose a date and a time, and again, we don't have to do it at 6 o'clock, if you want to make it 6:30 or 7, whatever makes it easier for you all to be here, I'm certainly, I personally am certainly open to that. Want to try to make these meetings as easy for everyone to attend as we possibly can.
Are they three hour meetings, four hour meetings, two hour meetings? That would depend upon.
I tell you, we, well.
What time you want to start?
In, in recognition of the fact that there's going to be more than one, I guarantee that, would one of you, one of you, one of you propose, were you wanting something? I thought you were seeing your hands up or something, no, okay. So anyway, you want a set time limit on the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so what type of time limit would you like to set?
I mean, I think if I close, it's over after an hour and a half, two hours.
Which one, hour and a half or two?
Call it two, maybe.
Start with two, make a progress.
Are you okay with two, seriously?
No, seriously.
Okay, two hour time limit, what date for the first one?
About Tuesday 23rd, September 23rd.
Say it again.
Tuesday, September 23rd.
23rd, I'm okay with whatever you all set up.
Does that work for everyone else?
23rd at what time?
5:30, 5:32 or 5:20.
Greg won't, I don't think Greg can be here at 5:30, but I'm speaking at my turn.
5:30 is going to be hard and I'm going to be a little late, but.
No, say 6:00, 6:00.
Want to do 6?
Let's do 6.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get the notice out on that, and what we'll do towards the end of that meeting, we'll set the next one, so it's going to take more than one, I assure you. All right, September 20, 36.
Department heads or just council?
Initially, it's going to be just us, and, and, and we got some.
Make sure to meet your life back, okay?
We've got some heavy lifting to do, and then we'll come back and I'll get with individual department heads and share with them whatever direction the board is going to send us in. All right, okay, next on the agenda is the agreement for dispatch service with Monroe County, somewhere here under nine.
Yeah, it's behind that.
We have the agreement for dispatch services, I think it's fairly straightforward.
Do we know if it's changed since the last agreement?
It has not changed.
Monetarily, it's the same as last year, correct? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for dispatched services between the county of Monroe and the city of Monroe City.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agreement for dispatch services between the city of Monroe, city of Missouri and Monroe County, dispatched, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second on the floor, be there any discussion on this matter at hand?
The date here where it says October 2024 to 2025, that needs to be changed.
Good catch.
So that'll be October 2025 to September 26, can we ask them to make that change and, and then we'll, we'll approve it?
Mine five.
Excuse me?
Mine five.
Yeah.
I was mainly looking at the expense side when I looked at the net list.
Yeah, well, that's exactly what I've been done too, so no harm in that. Okay, so.
You all could, maybe I'm saying the same thing, authorize. You all could, maybe I'm saying the same thing, authorize the mayor to sign.
Contention.
Yes. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for dispatch services contingent upon changing the dates to October one, twenty twenty five through September thirty, twenty twenty six.
So moved.
So moved, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor to agree to the terms of the agreement for dispatch service between the city of Monroe City and Monroe County, Missouri, contingent upon changing the dates on line five to October first, twenty twenty five and September thirty, twenty twenty six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion carries. Oh boy, oh boy. The next one is a discussion on the water district sales. Would it be appropriate to allow the city clerk to explain this? Right now, if I get this wrong, please, gentlemen, correct me, right now, George, what's Palmar called, Marion County? I'm sorry, Marion County, is it Marion County Water District or?
Yes, Marion County Water District in the five, city of Palmar.
Okay, so the Marion County Water District and Cannon Water District, not Cleanse Cannon Hall, but Cannon Water District, both are water from the city of Monroe State currently, their rate is five dollars per thousand gallons. Our residential rate for all of our subscribers is nine dollars per thousand gallons of water. And it has been suggested that we need to review that current rate and modify it to a value that the board determines is the correct value to charge them. That's why we're on the agenda. So, George, do you have anything to lend to this conversation that would be beneficial for the board to know?
Well, during the summer, that is the most expensive time for us to produce water. There's the most organic number of water, we're using more chemicals in the water, and Cannon Water normally starts drawing from us somewhere in May, and they'll draw in through September and beginning of October, and then periodically over the winter times. So, they are buying the cheaper water at the most expensive production times. So, I, I, I would hope that, my, my opinion is you don't want to get rid of this revenue stream, because like last month, there was roughly five million gallons that was sold. But, you know, again, you hate to sell it to somebody at below what the cost of production is. And that's kind of where you're at right now.
Are there other options that they don't need?
They really don't have any other option, because they can't hook up to Marion County, because Marion County is having the same issue with Clarence Cannon. They were both counting on Monroe City to build that twelve inch main up here, and then they were both going to take water off of that twelve inch main whenever it got up here. So they were going to be able to supplement themselves there, but there's no other location for them to get water. I guess they could look at Rolles County as a possibility. Marion is buying from Palmyra also, but Palmyra just raised their rates also to them. Hillcar County Water is actually building south, so they can hook up possibly to Marion County Water on the north side.
Do you know what Palmar charges Marion County?
I, I, I do not know. All I know is Marion, or, I guess I was mistaken, permanent is, he told me that they just raised their rates.
And how much water does Marion County pull from us on average?
I want to say there's, there's twenty four toll meters, the way I understand it, that they shut off a portion of their system because they can't get enough water to the south side of the system, and they feed directly off of us, whatever the twenty four meters used. I do not have the actual numbers, I want to say it's, they were drawing close to twelve thousand gallons a day, maybe.
What does it cost us to produce it per thousand in the summer?
It, it depends.
It varies a lot.
It varies a lot, yeah. And permanganate, sodium permanganate, which is a chemical we use to combat magnesium, which is very high in the summer, is really the driving factor of the cost of water. And we're feeding it at two hundred and fifty milliliters per minute right now, which is a lot, where it runs about three, I want to say it's close to three dollars a pound for this, for this product. But it's neat, it, that we go back to very high tributaries and everybody need oil order and so.
What would the range be, do you think?
I don't, I don't recall, I did, I, I produced that a while back in the mayor, and I kind of went over it, but I set that aside. I don't remember what it is. I, I could send it out to, I, I go over to give it to the mayor, and mayor can then let you guys know what it is.
We need to know some of those numbers. I do too, I definitely feel like an adjustment needs to be made, but I would also like to kind of see.
Yeah, what measures are maybe.
I guess my question is this.
Why would be charged?
Why would they?
Hey Les, for the.
We surely don't, we surely don't, right now, I can tell you right now, that we're not making any money at all in water or sewer. They're both going to be upside down when it comes to budget time. And the, the cost of production is cost of production. However, that doesn't capture everything, because there are also some other costs relative to the agreement that we have, whether it were fixed cost, that we're going to pay no matter what. So, I guess my question be, and maybe I don't understand how this works, but if I pay nine dollars per one thousand gallons, why doesn't everybody pay nine dollars? It makes me feel like that the residents are subsidizing somebody else. That's how I view it, and maybe my view is wrong.
Well, maybe we see that the cost should be ten dollars, yeah.
And so, I, I, I would, I would say at some point in time, there may be.
I mean, for Marion County, you know, water.
So.
Can we, so you're saying you'd like to get this like in place now?
Oh, absolutely.
So if we make it, what has to happen to change the rate?
You, you change the rate. You're, the board by ordinance is allowed to review and adjust the rates on all utilities from time to time as they see fit.
And they don't have to be given certain notice?
I think in the contract, it did say there was sixty eight dollars.
We don't have a contract for the current rate. There is no contract in place that even addresses the current rate that they've been paying for however long they've been paying, which is five dollars. That, that original contract, if I remember it, it sums all, it's somewhere in the three dollar range, there's some complicated math that has to be done. I'm not going down that road, it was a very complicated contract.
Rate it to the nine dollars and then.
And tie it way farther.
It's your call, ladies and gentlemen, it's your call.
I'm not opposed to it, I just want to make sure that.
Do you see an issue with it?
Be ten dollars.
We don't have contracts that either one that we could locate.
No, no, I mean, just me, I think you need to charge everybody the same.
I need to.
At least, and then you can look at it, we need to charge them more, we can't, but at least charge them the same.
Get that in place now, and then we can.
We can.
We can.
At that time, whatever.
George, what do you think?
I, it's totally up to the board.
Well, I mean.
Produce how much water.
You have a different perspective than we do relative to water production cost, and also, you also probably have a different perspective on what they may or may not do if we do this, and consequently, if the law, if, would, would the loss of revenue from that be so significant that it wouldn't be offset by the reduction in production and reduction in cost?
Yeah, I, yeah, you were correct.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so someone make it, make them.
The water depends on the water rate, they'll probably outrank their customers' water rate, I don't know what Cannon Water District customer pays for the water, but.
Not much.
It could be less than what Monroe City customers.
Okay.
But it's not their full system though.
I'll make a motion to increase the rates of Marion County Water and Cannon Water District to nine dollars per gallon.
We have a motion on the floor.
Per thousand gallons. I'm sorry, per thousand gallons. Per thousand.
Minor detail.
That might, that might work for about one day.
Sorry, per thousand gallons.
Look at that bill.
Single handedly pull this out of her.
Definitely.
Okay, I apologize for my lack of professionalism. We have a motion on the floor to change the billing rate to.
Nine dollars.
To nine dollars per one thousand gallons for both Marion County and Cannon Water. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We have to send them, do we need to give them like a thirty day notification? You guys okay with that? We'll send them a letter and say your new rate takes effect in thirty days. Okay. Any further discussion on this matter? Okay, let's move right along. Next thing on the agenda is the library. As I stated earlier, we met the president of the library board on the seventeenth. They signed the lease agreement that was previously approved by the board. The lease agreement is basically a lease agreement that says they get to utilize that, that part of the building at no cost, they must provide their own insurance, and that's long and short, and so we signed that agreement. The next thing was to settle up the account, the agreed upon amount, which is the exact amount of money in their account, is to transfer one hundred and seventy seven thousand five hundred fifty four dollars and thirteen cents from our account to theirs, and that will take care of the requirement for the separation of the library who has their own board, and will make their own determinations on how they spend their money, and they have a separate tax that will provide annual revenues to them. Currently, we will still be required to take that amount out of the receipts that we get and transfer to their account. Did we have that discussion with them relative to getting that changed so that we don't have to do anything? Is that, is that something we can?
For this balance here?
No. Yeah, what we're going to do tonight, we're going to get, hopefully get approval to make this transfer, and that settles us up, but going forward, the city will still be receiving the money from the counties.
Right.
And we still have to separate it out and send them a separate check, we agreed to do every month.
Right.
That was the agreement, but as I sat here and think about it, I think the long term goal should be to get the counties to send it to them directly, so we don't have to do anything with it. I don't know if that's possible. In the meantime, it's going to be, we don't get the receipts from the three separate counties at the same time every month. And so consequently, we'll have to wait till all three show up, and we'll have to cut them a check, and they're aware that it won't be at the same time every month, is that right? It'll, it'll be when we get it. So, what I need to do tonight is to have the board to authorize, authorize the transfer of the one hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars from our account to theirs, and that will complete the transition. We have a motion on the floor to approve the transfer of one hundred and seventy seven thousand five hundred fifty four dollars and thirteen cents to the library board. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the transfer of one hundred and seventy seven thousand five hundred fifty four dollars and thirteen cents to the library board. Be there any further discussion on this matter at hand? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay, let's move right along to committee reports, planning zoning board. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
I didn't include their meeting.
Excellent.
I would just like to say for Parks Board, thank you Mike, but I'm probably going to tag you in.
Okay.
Because I don't know if we have the ability to install those, so.
Right.
You know, you and I need to talk about that, so thank you for your help.
Okay.
And when we talk, I'll be picking on you again.
Okay. One thing that is of note, the new playground is installed, the, the base has been installed, it's quite awesome. It's currently blockaded into a padlock, because we're not going to open it up until whenever we're supposed to open it up, I'm not sure what that answer is. We've got concrete to install, we've got a building installed, restrooms, lighting, security cameras, electric partners want to put in two new poles, take, take those little rickety poles down, do whatever needs to be done with the transformers, so that we're in there one time and get back out. It'll be a twenty by forty concrete parking lot installed, there's going to be quite a bit of sidewalk work installed, but it is moving along nicely.
It looks nice.
It does, it, I, I.
Wait on the ADA, you want to.
Okay.
Before we.
Alright.
They are going to be able to leave the playground, we decided that.
Okay.
So they're going to take the swing sets down, but leave.
That, that's excellent, no, you totally is. Alright. Administration Committee?
No.
You don't have the economic development.
Hmm?
You skipped C.
Who did I skip?
C, I didn't see. Economic Development Tax Board. You don't have a C? You skipped this, C.
Oh, by golly idea, didn't I? Anybody here from Economic Development Tax Board?
I am.
Hey Lori, what's that?
We start collecting here in the year of September first, and we were trying to figure out how to be sure we have that, because I think the sort of.
I haven't gotten one yet.
So, we're working on how to address that, so everyone knows to increase the rate, and it sounds like a lot of them haven't received the notification that the tax goes into the top level one. They're going to have to pay that, whether they collect it or not.
What do?
We're trying to let everyone know. We just discovered.
Can, can we get that, she's.
She's there.
Can, can we get that on our website? The tax increase? What else can we do?
It's already been.
I put it on Facebook.
Okay, okay.
Just to be aware, and if anyone out there has a notification.
Can you let the chamber know, chamber knows, I assume, they can let their members know?
Good point.
I guess the Department of Revenue is the one that knows who it actually applies to.
Oh, okay.
You know, not all people that collect sales tax have to, this doesn't apply to all, there are certain things that are, like agricultural, there's a few listed things that don't have to.
It's more focused on retail.
It's retail, yeah.
Sounds like it could be an interesting start.
I don't want to have a negative first, you know. Anyway, did you have any luck today? Anyone? I just didn't get a chance yet, that's why I apologize, I didn't get a chance, I think. We're working on trying to make sure.
Anything else in economic development? Alright, I apologize for that, Lori. Next thing on the agenda is the Administrative Committee Report.
No.
Next thing on the agenda, the Operations Committee Report.
We didn't have a meeting, but I was talking to you yesterday, brought up about looking at getting a projector and, and a screen for be able to work with meetings and budgets and everything, so we can see everybody's on the same page. And I put together some stuff here, and three different options. With the first option being, I believe it'd be the ideal option, it's not an exact cost, because there'd be a couple other little math paragraphs, you know, minor things, but I think it would still be under a thousand total. Because that second one doesn't include the screen, the screen's on the next page, and that screen's actually smaller than the first one. It's a hundred and six versus a hundred and fifty inches. It's 106 versus 150 inches, or 120 inches rather. It would be wonderful to do that. And electric automatically drop down.
Where would we put it? Oh. So if you were doing, if you were doing the presentation, you were sitting up here, you would be in front of it.
Well, I mean, shoot, wouldn't it be nice, like, we sit here and talk about all this stuff?
They don't know.
No, I know what we're talking about.
Yeah, we have to kinda
Okay, well, fine, that's fine. My thought process, and I guess if we put it back up, we can make it work. When we're going through the budget, we're gonna have sales spreadsheets out here and we'll be talking about individual line items and making determinations based upon what the numbers tell us. Similar conversations when we talk about capital spending, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it'll get quite deep, I assure you. So yeah, I think it's great, I just almost thank you for
It would map towards the top and then it would come down
Right in front of this.
Right, when we need it, and then we
Look down.
It's motorized. On the ceiling, yeah. So it'd be up and out of the way.
Would it be behind the flag?
It just depends on the throw distance of it. Worst case scenario, I guess we could move the flag if we needed to, but it's
I think it's long overdue because it's really, really difficult to do some of this stuff with wallpaper this thick in front of you.
I think it would be nice to inform the public, there's certain things that we look at all the time, but we just, we have to get something.
Right.
But a presentation that's there every meeting, that they can view some of the stuff that's in our package.
That could reverse the turn, turn the packet into a PowerPoint, then it'd just be a matter of getting from that side.
Do we need to put that in the budget? Make a move on it?
It'd be nice to have this stuff as soon as we can get it.
Yeah, that's right, because we're kind of wanting to be able to work on the budget.
I mean, we don't have to have any of it, but it would certainly be helpful.
Do we have the money to buy it?
Do we have line item for that tonight?
There's a couple of considerations, if you're gonna put in a projector, you're gonna have to make a safety lighting, there'll be pretty much floor lighting in case of those that would be walking around during the presentation, and also drapery to block out any lighting from outside sources that would wash out.
We need that anyway, but two, I think these are bright enough that you wouldn't necessarily even need to turn all the lights out. So, because they're like 3,600 game, I think it works.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, they're 4,000 limit, yeah.
Fairly bright, yeah.
I brought my little small one in here and you can see it with the lights out and with it sunny out. So, yeah. And this one's a lot brighter, so yeah, mighty worst case scenario, we can be blind until it's here, which we need anyway.
Okay. Do you guys wanna send this to committee to review or y'all make a decision? You got three quotes, right?
Yeah.
That's all we need.
Do you have a recommendation on which?
The first one.
Which one's the first one, Mike?
The first one, the first page.
First page?
Yeah.
Mine is 35.
Mine is 98. I'd call it under 1,000, just in case, you know, or we need a little safety cable thing.
And how, what do we need in order to like, have a laptop or something?
Well, we've got laptops that we're not using downstairs, right? So we could just use one of those and bring it up here.
Okay, so basically what we need to do is make a motion to approve the projector system with an estimated cost of, in total, of 1,000 dollars. We have a motion on the floor to approve the projector system, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a most second on the floor to approve the projector system. Any further? If not, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Board of Adjustment?
Sure, yeah. We met earlier, I'll let the chairman discuss what we discussed.
Yeah, we met up tonight on the Board of Adjustments. We had a little confusion because the paperwork that we were given, which is what I call the old blue book.
Yes.
I was on it years ago. It was a front yard, each is 30 foot, and it was a form of knife that on our webpage is 25 foot.
Okay.
So we did make a motion, a second, and passed it. But before we left, there was people who didn't understand what the motion was. So I don't know where we're gonna reconvene or what, what do you plan on doing with your client?
Well, at this point, what was passed by
Was a one-foot variance.
Was a waste of everybody's time tonight, however, we don't have because one foot's a matter of time. But they'll just, we have a developer willing to build a spec house in town, we may just take it on the nose and get a builder and figure something else out.
But we still need to know
What's right.
30 foot here, 25 foot there.
So what we were working from was what was handed out to the Board of Adjustment the night that we met, kind of had our little working committee. This is what we called the blue book.
Right.
But apparently, the ordinance on the website says something different than this says. So I don't know if the ordinance has been, a new ordinance has been put in place, but this was never updated. I don't, we don't know.
I don't think a blue book's been changed before.
Is that like, we're set back to 30?
Yes, yes.
Was that blue book, was that printed from like, what?
The blue book is like really old. There's been several modifications and adoptions of general codes, and that may be what's going on right here. My first, City Attorney probably ought to answer this question, but most likely what happens, whatever is in the ordinance book that's been codified will take precedent over the blue book. And we've had this discussion where the blue book needs to be updated.
It's what's on our website, what's in the ordinance book, I mean, how do we know which one is?
The website
The website has currently 25.
The website
So it's a 20, then it's a 25, what we had tonight was incorrect, third.
Correct.
So that means, we basically, if we stick to our guns, granted them a one-foot variance. So you could either take it or we'll reconvene.
Is that gonna be as a foot enough for what figure out?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, that's what we gave.
Right, yeah.
Right, so that's what we said.
But you need to reconvene.
The problem is, we don't have, and I'm not even asking or suggesting, we don't have ordinances that take care of runoff water. That's what this variance was about. Water runs off, that's sealed, okay, so you have to make your adjustment for that, which my maker did.
I did disagree. It was a bad lot, it's like out of the waterway running down through the backyard. Bought it.
As an extra.
Water happens. We just need to know, one, which one is correct? And number two, I don't, I'm not throwing you under the bus, but years ago, there was always a clerk there to take notes, make, take minutes, and put them up the next day.
Are we supposed to have a clerk in our?
Yeah, we used to, I don't know if we changed that.
We don't for any of the other committees.
Are we supposed to have electrical or water people there to say that, that there's no problem with that variance? And we don't know what we're supposed to do.
That was the other problem, usually years ago, electric, water people would always at that meeting, and we'd look at it and say, if you have any problems with this variance, you have utilities running through there. Nobody was there. Now the landowner says, oh, I've gotta take care of, we can't go by that. Now they don't have to be there, but we at least need them to sign off something, saying that this variance is not interrupt with utilities.
And this committee is different than like just, like you're making, yes, I generated changes versus just
Yeah.
I think those department heads need to be aware of what changes that they're making and sign off on them.
Yeah. Before it comes to the variance committee.
Before it gets to Before it gets to the, yeah, I mean, yeah.
What'd you say, I'm sorry?
Before it gets to us, they will approve it through the utilities.
Yes, and we need something signed so we know that the variance we're giving doesn't interfere with those utilities.
I agree to that.
The other thing, do we have to hire our own clerk? Or we get a clerk that do the minutes? We fired you, right?
I forget to take the minutes.
I forgot to rush back.
I can't answer your question, I'd have to look, I'd have to look at it a lot. Some of the, some of the standing, not committees or boards, but these are committees, they're supposed to elect a chairperson and a vice chairperson and a reporter. But I don't know if the bylaws for that particular order suggest that, I'd have to look.
Only committees eyes are associated with the planning zoning.
Yeah.
As Board of Adjustments, clerk was always there, that's changed, I'm good with that, we'll have to adjust, but we still, we just need to know what direction to go.
So he's asking, in theory then, he's asking for a six-foot variance, right?
Well, don't make a
I don't think that's correct, the issue has, I mean, that's, the issue is that we need to provide them with the correct
Correct.
Whatever it is, we gotta get them the right ones.
Yeah.
And we need to be sure, like you said, that procedurally, these different department heads sign off on the variance before it gets to them. And who's gonna take the minutes if he needs it, right?
You got it, we did everything we need, right? The council always has to approve the variance, even if we voted no, they can override us, I think, right, John?
Right.
So you approved?
We approved, but nobody understood, we really didn't
I think when we ended, we were kinda like, this is a mess.
It was a mess.
We approved a one-foot.
Yeah, basically, if it's a 25-foot front yardage, if it's a 30-foot, if the rule's 30-foot, we give them a six.
But you approved the variance.
Yeah, we did. What else Dr. Green asked for? He agreed to get along with the neighbors and offset, and that's what we voted on.
That is exactly what you said. The porch will be the same as the neighbor distance from the street, that's what we approved.
That's what we changed.
Literally at 1 foot.
It's literally 1 foot, 25. Six feet and then it's off to 30. Yeah, we did approve a motion.
Okay, so do we need to vote on the approval of the motion? Or do you want to reconvene?
Is it okay?
Would you please do that?
But reconvene?
Approve it. Vote on the approval of our motion, yes.
Without the other department heads' approval or say that they looked at it?
I thought the motion was subject to the final sign off.
Before they get the building from there?
Okay, we can have, we can direct the building inspector to get the approval of whatever departments need to look at it, gas, water, whatever.
I think they're gonna be fine.
Okay. Who?
I made the motion, Lori seconded it.
They'll have to sign off before we get a building from there anyways.
All right, so who, in whose name was this variance requested?
Lynn Brooks Holding LLC.
Lynn Brooks Holding LLC, you know that?
Yeah, she's famous.
All right. I haven't read everything in this book, I apologize. Okay, so we have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the variance request from Lynn Brooks Holding, all in favor say aye.
We didn't make a motion here yet.
I thought someone did.
That was it.
We passed it.
Okay, so what do y'all wanna do?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from the variance committee.
Okay, we have a most on the floor to approve the recommendation from the Board of Adjustment, do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor to approve the recommendation of the Board of Adjustment, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Very good, thank you.
Was there a second, was there a second issue you all addressed?
No, just, we need, we need to know what's, what's 30-foot or 25.
Okay, all right. There is.
Would you like us to try to
We have one, it says 30.
It says 30 foot, but she's
We have one.
It's 25, we're gonna get it.
But the website is current.
They gave it to us
From City Hall.
A month ago, and we had, had a meeting
When we first started We don't know where that came from, but they were pretty sure it happened. First, the committee was first, information was provided to committee members that we believe was wrong. And so now, the confusion is that there was 30-foot number, there's our ordinance, there's 25. So he's asking, please just give me
Something updated.
Updated information.
Okay, very good, thank you folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, it's okay, we'll get this figured out.
You still got the job.
Whether you wanted it or not.
All right, department reports, please. So what do we got here?
Murma.
10, 11?
Yeah.
We have our police department, Murma, seminar coming up, October 22nd and 23rd. And we are requesting that Zach and myself go. The registration fee is $2.35 per person. And we are needing two nights at the motel, the night before and the night of, at 166 per room per night. So we are requesting the $470 registration fee and $654 motel for the two of us for two nights.
Can I ask why you're going? Because I read through this and I didn't see anything
That was Ben's request.
This is aimed at officer training.
This is aimed at officer training, so I'm gonna say one or a second officer.
Okay. I went last year, that's why he requested.
I understand.
Okay.
You have anything to add to this, Captain?
No, sir, Matthew Nelson here. Working on nuisance system.
Is there any other officers that would be going by chance?
No, we don't have the staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there, before we just put the hammer, is there a good benefit to you in your position here from this? Because I don't wanna say no, but no, and I don't know, by what's listed here, I don't see how that pertains to you.
Actually, last year, I had quite a bit out of it. I learned other departments' procedures, other departments, how they do things. I found it very beneficial. And Jeff has always kinda said that it would be good for me as well. So, I don't know, I went last year, Zach requested the same this year.
I can kinda see the reason it would be better to run the department at administrative side, as far as like Murma standards and how they want it run, chase, no send, keeps up to date all of our Murma stuff, but I think that's the best beneficial plan, I can see is that, you know, both the administrative and the administrative system's like, falls down the same page.
I understand that, it just doesn't read like that. Do you see what I mean? It reads like it's more active officer than covering the big Ah, do you see what I mean? It reads like it's more active officer than covering the big picture.
And the topics do change every year, so I don't know what the topics they had this year compared to this year. You know, they always had different.
This class is designed for command staff.
I could kinda see where it might be beneficial for her to know that, let me go of what their, their officers need to do. But I don't know.
So the question is recent one or two? Is that the question? Or two officers? I mean, you can't sense the officers because they're short officers.
You can't sense the officers. They have staffing as well as toll. How, how many days is this? Just two?
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-first and twenty-second.
Two full days, I'm excited.
Twenty-second and twenty-third.
Yeah, twenty-second and twenty-third. I was reading motel.
Gotcha.
Yeah, no, it is the twenty-second and twenty-third.
This class is designed for command staff to bring the training protocol back to their respective departments however they see fit. Somebody else just read that.
It does seem to be done until the seventeenth, right?
Reservation.
Yeah.
On my cell. Is that right?
Oh.
She's saying the twenty-third.
The seventeen, just the cutoff now?
Well, I think October. Look at the hotel reservation. If you need a room, the room rate, plus the reservation cutoff, she takes the option. What are we talking about?
Alden Saunders, you and make a motion one way or the other.
Five hundred dollars. I make a motion that we approve to send one person to this training.
We have a motion on the floor to send one person from the police department to the Murma training. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, send one person to officer training for the Murma training to be held in October twenty-second and twenty-third. Either you have further discussion on the matter at hand?
Thank you, guys.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Have, who voted aye? Okay. The ayes have it, motion carries, one person. To the training October twenty-second. Okay, let me see here. Lot of. Let that get right in my way. Water department?
Thanks.
Would, would the sword of arms please approach?
All right. I just got a small list here. Um. We just received, uh, all of the public notices from DNR for the first and the second quarter, uh, disinfection byproduct violations. And they are, uh, at A and S right now, beginning to print it and they're gonna be mailed out so whenever you receive them. Uh, just letting you know, I mean, I, I told you that we, we continue to, uh, exceed the disinfection byproducts. That is why we're switching to the chloramine disinfection. Uh, so unfortunately, we will have a, uh, uh, we're gonna be over the average for the future quarters. Even though we're gonna switch to chloramine, chloramines in October, we only test this once a quarter, so. Uh, there's also a letter in with the public notice informing the public that we are switching to work on or no sooner than October fifteenth. So, uh, also we talked about having a meeting on October the second, I believe it was. We, uh, no longer need to have that meeting. We are sending this out with the public notice and that satisfies DNR. So as long as we're notifying the public, and then I will individually notify, there, there, there's some, uh, risk or some human risk factors, people that, uh, are on dialysis, so like the nursing home contact, they must contact all the clinics in town and anybody that they might know, uh, also people with fish tanks. Uh, right now they're, uh, removing the chlorine. They will be having to change what they use to remove the disinfectant and start removing chloramines instead. They do, it is a separate, uh, chemical that they have to use to get rid of the disinfectant.
I'm not sure if floating's finished.
Well, we're, that's, that's why we're informing them.
Yeah.
Alden Saunders, so. Okay, uh, any questions on the public notice or the letter? I don't, did we, did we supply the letter in the pack in any chance? I'm just curious.
No, I can see that. I'll email it.
Okay, so, so sure, I'm sorry about that. I should have had.
It's okay.
To you guys.
It's all right.
But, uh, okay. Um, let's see here, uh, progress on the chloramines. Uh, we are, uh, progressing, well, we're, we're waiting, we're waiting. We're waiting on, on, uh, product. Uh, right now we're down to, uh, some fittings for the, to go from two-inch to three-quarter inch sweat powder. Uh, and we're waiting on, that, that, that's a big one, cause I have to move a water line and some other stuff there. Uh, we're waiting on that. We just received our chemical huts today. I mean, we're, we're almost there. Uh, and we're waiting on a gasket and stainless steel bolts to, uh, change out of flame. So it's just small, small.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, uh, once we get this project done, then we'll have to finish the, uh, switch from, uh, the temporary chlorine dioxide, which is another disinfectant we're using, uh, to the permanent, uh, uh, you know, placement of that, which is gonna require a water heater, uh, and eye wash stations. Most of that stuff's already purchased. It's just gonna be the installation, uh, on that show. Anyway, uh, giving you the heads up on that. Uh, manholes, uh, so we, uh, have, we had to purchase risers for the eighteen, I believe, manholes that are within the paving route. There was too much of a lead time, uh, for getting the manhole, so the mayor got on the phone the other night and talked with ESS and got them to push off paving until October the thirteenth, the week of October thirteenth. And hopefully we will have our manhole risers by then. Um, we, uh, we did put it out for bid. We, the oldest bid has been awarded and told them to hurry up. That's where we are with that. Okay, last thing I have is I was contacted by J C out at, uh, J C's Art. And, uh, backstory is back in the early seventies, he was on the board, I guess, and, uh, handshake agreement was that he was gonna put a lift station inside of, or what wasn't really a compound at that point, but now it's kind of a huge compound. He put a lift station in there and took the line all the way over to between the nursing home and, uh, where Luke's, uh, Tri County. And he drops into a manhole over there. And he was always under the impression that the city was gonna take care of this, but all these years, you know, he's been taking care of his own lift station. Well, now I guess he needs to upgrade his lift station. And he's also built buildings and on top of the line and so on and so forth, so. Uh, he has purchased the old state highway building. And before the state, uh, got rid of it, they had to put in a lift station. Uh, and so they have a lift station with one pump in it that pumps all the way down county, county line road across Highway twenty-four and dumps into a manhole there. He is, uh, essentially wanting us to take over his lift station. I told them there's no way that I could tell the council we will take, uh, take over the one that's inside of this compound. We wouldn't have access to it. It's, uh, like I said, the line is underneath buildings, so on and so forth. Um, he has supervised, said, well, I can run the line. I can change where it discharges to. I can discharge to this other lift station. And then the city could take over that lift station. And then, you know, I'm, again, I'm not pumping underneath all my buildings and so on and so forth. Only problem is, is it doesn't meet DNR specs. It has to have a minimum of two pumps. We always have to have that. So, uh, price to upgrade that particular lift station to, uh, two pump duplex lift station is, uh, roughly, uh, maximum be twenty-five thousand dollars with five thousand dollars, uh, worth of labor to install electrical, so on and so forth. So to, uh, take care of J C's and actually take ownership of one of his current owned lift stations would cost the city about thirty thousand dollars. And then it would be maintained by the city from now on. I told him I would bring it to you guys and let it go from there. And I will answer any questions you might have on it.
So it's thirty thousand to take his over or the one from the state?
The state.
State.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not underground. That's not under buildings or anything?
No, it's not under buildings. It's actually in the ride.
And we would be upgrading the existing hole or putting a second one in?
That I, I, I couldn't really put it out for bid for people to come in and look at it because until, until you decide, I, I, that twenty-five thousand dollars is high end for what do it cost to replace it with nobody coming looking at it? And then five thousand dollars worth of labor, uh, and, and other to actually get that hooked up. So thirty thousand dollars is what we're looking at as the worst. Best case, I still think you're gonna be close to twenty.
What, what, is it common that a city would do that? I mean, to me, I would suggest to J C, you need to upgrade it. And then once it's upgraded, we'd be glad to take it over.
I, I, I offered that to, to J C and, um, yeah, he, he's, um, um, uh, very colorfully told me that that is not, uh, you know, he said, I, I've been, I, you know, you, you, you've probably talked to the man, you know, how, and, and he is a nice man until you upset him. And, and I upset him.
All right, I see you spin one.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, but he has had costs all these years?
Yes.
Correct? That the city should have incurred or not?
No, there is no agreement.
Okay.
There was never any agreement. It was just, he put it in and, and I, 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 I personally think that the way it was put in was probably not the way it should have been. Uh, you know, he was telling me, oh, some guy came that's no longer alive and, you know, he just ran it over there and we put it up and that was it. So, but then he's built buildings on top and which, it, it's, yeah, he's, uh, uh.
Does that, now I'm questioning?
No, it, it functions, but he's gonna have to, he's getting ready to have to upgrade the one inside of this compound. So he was gonna upgrade it, but he wants to send it a different direction, get it out from underneath all of his buildings. And send it over to the other lift station, which then he wants us to upgrade so that we can accept his suit or to then send it to town. Cause he can't gravity from.
Are we required to accept his suit or?
No, 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 no. They're, they're.
No, I don't need to.
Further discussion.
Yeah, I just need to bring it to you guys because I told J C I would and I got a report back to him. Uh, I told him I would report back to him. Next day I'm at work, so I'll talk to you on Monday if he doesn't call me for then. And I'll tell him that I gave you the information and, uh, probably the operations committee would be somebody to, to look at it, I would assume.
Was that put in before the parts store and the, the mechanic shop right there?
I cannot answer that, but I would assume so.
I think it was. Okay.
Yeah.
So is it, are his buildings on top of the lift station or?
On the line.
On the line that discharges from the lift station as well as the lines that feed into his lift station.
So it's made it so it's hard to be tearing the.
Oh, he'll be tearing his building floors. Yeah, he'll be tearing it all up.
The nursing home has had an addition since then, too.
Yeah, but it doesn't make it that. It's, uh, it's actually, there's a small waterway in between the nursing home and Luke's. And the manhole is there and that is the beginning of that gravity line and, and it runs, actually runs right underneath Luke's building. But that's city made, so that is ours.
I did.
Or the city, I'm sorry. So, okay, well, I guess until I hear more about it, I'll just let J C know I gave you all the information.
Where, that's a time, if you just kinda.
We, we.
We're looking into, yeah, I'm gonna tell them that the council's looking into it. If there's any movement, I will know. But if you guys have any additional questions, then just, I'll write them.
Thanks, Sean.
You bet.
So if the board is going to be looking into it, does that mean that you're going to move it to committee?
Go to the operations committee.
Yeah.
I would think maybe he needs.
Congratulations, Mike.
Gee.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, electric. Electric. We got an electric before.
There's, uh. Well, he was going to be here tonight, but we had an outage.
I'm not a bad idea.
Yeah, it was, it was isolated outage. He called Noah in to handle outage, so.
Okay, since we're on that subject, um, since we canceled the, um, oh, that one was gonna, well, we could do that. We were gonna do that public hearing on October second at like five or five-thirty or something. Do we wanna do an operations committee meeting on that, on October second at five-thirty before our regular meeting?
He's scheduling his operations meeting to review the.
For the. For the second.
Station. Since we're all here.
Yeah, I'm not on the committee, but I can't.
At what time?
Five-thirty?
Yeah, no. No, Jason and Greg.
When?
Five-thirty on the second. It'd be before the regular meeting.
The second is a Tuesday, right?
October.
Yeah.
Second is a Thursday.
On my calendar.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's our council meeting.
No, that's the, that's right. Okay, in lieu of, that would, that just automatically populated. So would October second, a, a Thursday work for the operations meeting for you? That's not a council meeting because it falls on the second.
For the operations committee?
That sounds good. I'll get with Greg and see.
Okay.
So.
Not before six, prefer.
No, it'd be six, yeah. Okay, I'll get with Greg and see what he says.
My puppy will thank you.
My puppy will thank you.
Where are your puppies?
I'm going to.
I think so. I think we've been working really hard on not growling and biting. Getting along well with others.
I assume there's a, some, I haven't looked, uh, gas department?
Hmm, that is.
Street department?
Yeah.
I don't need to have nothing. Still a kid on it. That is false. You call it park. I think it looks good, what you did, so. I didn't basically have anything. The only thing I want you to consider is this dog pound down here in the winter. It's gonna be hard for me to take care of him in the winter. Fish is now. Thought they did that, but I didn't. There were a couple ideas.
Didn't it have a little part?
Yes.
It's hard to get rid of the snow out of the way?
Well, no, except I feed them every day and if I'm pushing snow, it makes it a little difficult. Last year it's no problem. We didn't have it. This year, right now they're seven, they've been nine. It's hard for me to.
And you're down a person?
I'm down a person and I cut in the morning. If they're waiting on me, they gotta wait an hour for I to feed these dogs. And I can justify that. In the wintertime when you're pushing snow, you know.
George is guy.
If you give us a key and under emergency situations, we will, people service will take care of the pound. You just need to show us what needs to be done.
Well, I know George's been doing it, been doing it fine, but you know, I'm just trying to thank those weather. Like last year, I just go in once, I went to the eat for it, that shows up.
The person?
We're already there. We have access to, to the weight ward facility, so. Yeah, this is nothing difficult.
Do you need some dogs, George?
No, no.
Okay.
That's basically it.
By the way, South Lake, that, that gravel is beautiful.
Yeah.
Beautiful. Sure, sometimes driving, you think you're running late, man, it's so smooth.
Yeah.
My friend, he tried to play. It turned out real good.
This kind of involves you all as well. Can I speak?
Are you gonna talk about the dog pound?
No.
Go ahead.
Do I need to talk about the dog?
I will, go ahead.
You probably ought to say that first before I speak, so we can finish up that line or whatever.
Okay, I think we need to put, quote, the dog pound on the operations agenda for two reasons. One is to clarify the discussion we just had relative to responsibilities during the winter. We currently have someone who does work on the weekends. How many times a day do we have to attend to the pound? Okay. Captain, do you have a suggestion?
In emergency situations, we do have key and access to that. Weekend upon request, definitely. We know that you can make it out there, call us or dispatch, let them know.
Okay.
And as soon as six o'clock comes on, we'll go out there and take care of it.
Okay, next thing, on, this is gonna be a very sticky subject. Regarding the pound, I was informed by the chief of police that our facility, Captain, if you're aware of information, or Kim, if you're aware of information relative to what I'm getting ready to discuss, that is more correct than what I'm getting ready to say. Please don't be afraid to say something. I was told that we no longer can accept felines.
That is correct.
I.e. cats.
That's per the state.
The state sector?
Our cages out there, they look like they were bought, I'm assuming it's state surplus at one point from some research facility and they are, I can't remember the exact dimensions, but they are too small to house felines per the standards of the state.
But they're big enough for dogs?
No, no, no. We have, we have lungs for dogs and we have a bank of cages for cats. We have two of those per state guidelines. They are undersized.
So we, we, it will be necessary at some point in time to address how we will manage that going forward. And at that point in time, we'll need to have a meeting, operations meeting, discuss that issue. And we'll have to probably have assistance from a representative, knowledgeable representative, not I'm laughing because this is, I can't believe I'm talking about this, to discuss how we would handle that issue where someone called, hey, I got a cat that's sick, ill, or abandoned, or running loose. How are we gonna handle that issue going forward?
Tell him to take it to Jason's house.
No.
What do they do now?
Dr. Monica has agreed to take cats. She tests them and she will either run out on a barn somewhere or euthanize them.
If they have some type of sickness, some type of communicable disease or something that would be basically shorten their lifespan, she would basically put them down humanely and dispose of the bodies in her furnace. So cremator. That's like, most cats, if we get injured, we take them on a good, like if we get some, they have a cat that broke legs. We try to get hold of Dr. Monica, if not, then we try to help them get a hold of like the Humane Society over in Hannibal, Quincy, we even, we even called Columbia. Just so we try to tell people, sorry, we can't take in cats. Oh, well, I have this stray around my house. I'm, I'm sorry, it's, there's not much we can do about that. We don't take in cats. And then they get upset, or there's a cat walking out of my car, I wanna press charges, sorry, I can't raise a cat. Oh, yeah.
So. Okay, moving right along, put that on your agenda. We will table further discussion on cats. Adrian's better. Yes, Adrian.
You were patient with me.
Two things. The traffic in the alleyway that runs east and west behind Ground and Grace in the gym.
Yes.
The one where we have the transformer? I will strongly just really beg for either a yield sign at that alley where it meets Davis or a stop sign if possible.
That would be awesome.
Yesterday.
Think people are just zipping right out of there?
They don't even slow down. We need them to slow down. They're gonna, it's, it's worse than I've ever seen it since it's kind of.
I've taken greater.
Oh, yeah.
I slow down. That and then get signed up for yield at that Davis there. Or yield for incoming traffic, or something along those lines.
It's bad enough that the people that live directly across from that driveway have strategically placed their least valuable vehicle there because they know it's gonna get hit. If not a person, and there's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of young people through there. It is so dangerous right now.
And during after hours.
It's, it's gotten really, it's, it's a wonderful problem to have it because we have a great business or two right there. But it poses another issue.
The lights just don't care about what's around it.
And that's exactly right. And the second part of it is, I had been on Prairie Street the other day, visiting with the family, and that dynamic on that side of town has changed to where it's not retired people as much as, or senior citizens. There's a lot of really young families with children. Do we have any spare children at play signs floating around down there that we could just encourage somebody to slow down?
What, what needs to happen, I think, I mean, I don't know if I'm right or wrong about this. What, what happened in 2023 is the board voted to install multiple stop signs throughout the city. Some which I personally would like to see gone, but it's not up to me. However, the chief of police can make a recommendation. Yes?
On that note, are you talking about signage? I've heard a rumor, rumor that apparently the stop sign like on Oak Street was going to be removed.
We're going, we're gonna have that conversation. There is a single stop sign on Oak Street. I, I can't describe exactly where the intersection is, but if you drive down Oak Street and you hit this area that goes, it's sunk way down. Okay, what's, what we've been told is causing that is these very heavily loaded trucks stopping at the stop sign. It causes the weight and the mass to shift and it's, it's killing our streets.
Gotcha.
Oak Court.
And, and so what we had talked about, and I talked to the chief about, is we're getting ready to spend a tremendous amount of money, to me it is, to do these streets and is that not a location that we can keep the one on Court, but take the one off Oak?
I'm very used to be one on Oak.
You know.
Yeah, that's a straight shot. It's like, it's a racetrack.
There's a couple of streets that run north and south that you can bypass Main Street and just fly from one end to the other. And that's what was happening.
Yeah, it both turned into a highway.
Yeah, and it did. And it really did.
But we're talking about one, not all.
And I don't disagree. I mean, I'm.
It's up to you guys. It's just that we feel like, I guess we could go in there and dig it out and fill it with concrete. I don't know.
They're using it as a truck route. They're using that side street.
That road is not designed for trucks.
Ah, maybe there's another way to fix this.
Yes, not a truck.
There's probably a couple ways to fix it. I have to say, I've inadvertently run that stop sign more than I care to admit and thankful.
All right, we'll, we'll get back to that.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. So the question I have, they're gonna start paving on October thirteenth. There's some streets that are over on the, good gosh, where am I at here? On the east side of town that you and I went and looked at. They're very short streets. How much notification, how, how much notification do we give? How do we make sure that people have their cars out of the way and stuff prior to them doing that?
I could start stopping, you know, asking, you know.
Is there sign?
I wanna make sure that, you know, that's when they're coming, they're right if you're in.
They should be here by the thirteenth. He's contacted. We're still on the street. That's why I'm having this conversation.
I guess what you could do is tell them, this is what's coming, so. I wanna make sure if you're on vacation or something, leave the vehicle, get away.
I'm trying to understand how this is gonna work and we don't have to, you know, have a go around somebody's vehicle or something, but we can't locate.
I was gonna say back in the eighties, I don't remember really any problems.
Good.
I don't know.
I do have a courtesy to let the people know, aren't we going to be affecting the driveway?
It's a huge cost to putting in a speed bump in that, that one stop sign.
That would still make them slow down and just tear up the road more.
You know, I think, we're still on the streets. We haven't left yet, so we're okay. I think what I would look at is designated, designated Oak Street to not be a truck route.
Yeah.
No trucks allowed. I can enforce it.
Last time that came out, though, Jason, I remember the issues that they spent all that money on the concrete on summer, on the elevator to get in from that side of town.
Do they?
Well, I don't know, but they widened it and there's all that reinforced concrete. They basically made it the truck route here on twenty-four to Oak to Summer without building up without putting on green.
Where they used to go down Chestnut Street until they took out that road.
So, is that section you mentioned, is it designed for the heavy traffic?
That section is correct.
Why are they associating that section? And they can't go that way down.
That's exactly what they say.
Yeah.
The city.
It's in the judge.
I never thought about that.
Or do we make it hard? Or so.
We just send it back.
All right.
I mean, can we have solutions or always spread it out or?
Yeah. Operations.
Okay, moving right along. Building inspector?
No.
Cause he made progress with that house over there, we talked about the last time.
Okay.
The house, it was an issue.
On Dover?
Yeah.
Oh, on Dover? I don't know what status that is. You're talking about the, the house that's falling in? I'm not certain.
He's been evicted and he knows that he's been evicted. And he's been slowly getting his belongings and then he disappears for days. So Mr. Lucas that owns it has actually cleaned it up quite a bit, capacity, I noticed. So hopefully, fingers crossed, the one that has been renting will be finally. So I'm gonna talk with Frank.
Yeah.
The owner and be like, is he done? If so, we'll trespass him and then you're fair game to completely do what you need to do. But Frank was banking on that grant to basically free demo of the properties. That list that he's, that was created, that was no longer valid. But he was banking on that to get the house listed to the east gone.
Okay.
But that never came to fruition.
That works. It's, it's progress.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's my one question.
All right, airport.
Nothing.
I like that. That was good. Mosswood. On Mosswood, there's something on here that says windmill motor.
Yes. Gary Baker came to city hall two days back. And he asked if the utility department, electric department would be able to take the bucket truck out to the windmill. He stated that the motor on the windmill needs oil. He didn't know if our electric department could do that. So I would check into it.
I mean, to me, it's a fixture on the land we own, so it's up to you all, but it is our property.
It belongs to us?
Yeah.
So, what, we don't have to have put on this. What's, what's the general consensus?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. I'll just get a work order.
All right. Good enough. Pool?
Close. Close for the seat.
That's gonna be an interesting conversation in a couple of time. Okay, next on the agenda. Bills. Okay, moving right along, Ronald. Presentation of bills and approval of payments.
I was wondering, it says at the bottom here, three hundred thirty-one thousand, and then it totals at six hundred sixty-three thousand.
It was just an error. Cindy said she tried to fix it and, yeah, it was just an error.
Okay. So that shouldn't be on there?
Correct.
I think the South Lake gravel was money well spent. Looks like we towed it. Eighty-seven Skyline. Oh, that would be the That would be the Airbnb that we used to have over by the police station?
Oh.
The Skyline? Yeah, that's what it says. Says towing charge. Eighty-seven Skyline.
Yeah, it had to get towed out to the.
I had such high hopes for revenue from that.
Where's this, where'd they go with this?
Quite well, and it probably would have been a little after.
Well, we're gonna do that second chance, you can stay there.
You guys know what cats can do.
George could stay there. If we have a snow day, that'd be nice.
I think it's, well, they already know what my thoughts are on it, yeah.
Don't you go following along with that.
No, 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 no.
Year or two.
I'm just glad it wasn't. I'm just glad it wasn't
Because, hey. We, we were working I thought we could park in here directly. No, thanks.
Just seeing if I have any questions on the bills. I don't see anything.
All my books.
Okay.
Yeah, most on the floor approved the, uh, bills payable. We have a second?
I'll say.
Yeah, most second approved, move, excuse me, approved bills payable. Be there any further discussion required? If not, moving right along. All papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, unfinished business?
Only thing I have is, I was curious about the properties that were on the list that we're gonna go back to Mr. Miller had interest in and
Mission.
Check on, or, I'm just curious.
Uh, Mr. Miller, uh, upon further review of the width of the property, determined that it would not be suitable uh, to put a spec home on. Uh, Mr. Long drew his bid on that one property, uh, which was the reason for doing the, uh, down payments in the first place, so we did call him out first. He, to give him opportunity to go ahead and buy it. He decided that was, uh, not, uh, suitable, so, uh, but they didn't sell. Uh, and then, uh, the property over on Turch Street that has these asbestos siding. We now have two, oh, we have one quote. We'll have a second, uh, quote for, uh, removal, demolition. So, we'll have an idea of the cost to do that.
Very strange.
You know, the, the house
Heinemann.
Yeah, yes, that, that's an appropriate Are you interested in?
No, no.
One bid is, I think, one bid is eighty-five hundred. We got, we got a whole bid on it.
It could be.
As your she-shit.
It could be a Barbie doll house.
A what?
Barbie doll house.
Yeah.
Just put a little love in it.
For the cats. Okay. I'm good. I'm good. I built a house, you didn't. Oh, okay. So, anyway, uh, that takes care of all the plan business. Uh, next thing we have on the agenda is a closed session, uh, to discuss, uh, per R S M O six one zero point zero two one, paragraph, pre-hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employee by a governmental body on personal information about the employee is discussed for, therefore, so therefore, uh, we need a motion going to executive session.
Make the motion on executive session.
We have a motion on the floor to go into executive session. We have a second. We have a motion second on the floor to go into executive session.
Paul Snyder?
Yes.
Autumn Quinn?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Uh, ten minute recess.